Good evening. My name is Su Kalyev. I'm the co-president of the League of Women Voters of Downers Grove, Woodbridge and Lisle. On behalf of our league, I'd like to welcome all of you who are here with us tonight. The forum this evening is for candidates running for the offices of Mayor and Village Commissioner. We welcome the candidates who are here tonight and we commend their desire to represent the citizens of Downers Grove. We have a great deal to accomplish this evening, so I will keep these remarks brief. The Nineteenth Amendment, which gave women the right to vote, was passed in early 1920 and almost immediately, the League of Women Voters was created right here in Chicago. So do the math. For 99 years now, the league has been striving to make democracy work in this country. It is impossible to overstate how seriously we take this. As an organization, we are nonpartisan in that we never support or oppose candidates for public office. However, we have learned that in order to remain viable, a democracy requires its citizens to be involved, to be informed, to be active in the democratic process. The league seeks to enable citizen involvement by registering voters, helping voters to become informed about issues and candidates, and explaining the vital importance of voting. We also educate and advocate in many areas of policy, and we welcome you to visit the League of Women Voters Villainoid website to learn about that work. We hold informative public programs and we meet with our legislators. If the work that I've just described sounds interesting, I invite you to join us. Making democracy work is an honorable activity for us all. The league welcomes both men and women as members 16 and older. If you have questions or simply want to know more, please ask any league member here tonight. We have membership brochures out in the tables near the doors, or you can visit our website or you can follow us on Facebook or Twitter. Now, I am pleased to introduce our moderator, who will explain the logistics for the forum. Jan Dornar has been a volunteer for most of her adult life. She has served in numerous roles on the state board of the League of Women Voters, including Board President. A member of the Elmhurst Local League, Jan served as president for four years, and she continues to observe the local school board, which she has done for over 25 years. Jan was active in PTA in Elmhurst, was president of several different levels of school PTAs. Jan received her Bachelor of Science from Northern Illinois in Biology, and professionally worked in the pharmaceutical, food and cosmetic industries. Currently, she serves as the Voter Services Chair for the State Board, and equally important as a very involved grandma. We are thrilled to have this moderator extraordinaire with us tonight, ladies and gentlemen. Please welcome Jan Dornar.
Welcome to the candidate forum put on by the League of Women Voters of Downers Grove, Woodbridge and Lisle. My name is Jan Dornar, as you heard, and I'm from Elmhurst. I grew up in Downers Grove though, so this is very important to me. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that neither supports nor opposes candidates or parties for any office. The league's purpose is to promote political responsibility through the informed and active participation of citizens in government. Providing this forum allows citizens to become better informed about the issues facing their community and to become better acquainted with the candidates running for office. We are happy to provide this service for the community. At this time, I would ask that you please turn off cell phones, pagers and other electronic devices. I would also ask that you refrain from applauding or in any other way demonstrating support or opposition of a candidate. No candidate literature may be passed out in this room. Note cards and pencils have been provided on which to submit your questions. Questions will be screened only for duplication, clarity and appropriateness to the office of mayor. Please signal a league volunteer when your question is ready for submission. Also, signal a volunteer if additional note cards are needed. This forum is for those seeking to be mayor of Downers Grove. The candidates have agreed to abide by the rules set forth prior to this forum. They will each present a two-minute introductory statement, the order determined right before this by drawing numbers. Then questions will be asked, and each candidate will have one minute to respond in alternating order. Closing statements in reverse order of the introductory statements will be one minute. LWV members will keep time and candidates will strictly adhere to the time limits. Candidates, please notice the timers. When you see the stop sign, you may finish your sentence. I would try and discourage you from using compound sentences. All right. So we're going to start with opening statement from Marge Earl.
Excuse me, can I ask first where the timer?
Timer's there.
Okay, there, thank you. I didn't see it. Okay. I'm Marge Earl, and I'm your candidate for mayor of the village of Downers Grove. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. My husband Ed and I have been residents-
We are residents.
I'm sorry. Okay. My husband Ed and I have been residents of Downers Grove for 26 years, and we raised our daughter here. I'm a registered nurse, which trained me to listen carefully to deal and to deal with things in a holistic and compassionate way, as well as to how to reason through problems logically and in a cost-effective manner. In late 2006, I became aware of changes proposed for our neighborhood that concerned me. As a result, I began attending village council meetings weekly, as well as meetings on budgeting and long-range planning. As I attended more meetings, I felt compelled to get further involved. I applied for and was appointed to the Ad-Hoc Commission on Affordable Housing, and the Zoning Board of Appeals, where I served for 10 years. My interest in local government and city planning led me to attend the American Planning Association-sponsored local planner training, and later state and national training. I have been a member of the American Planning Association for 10 years. I was also a member of the village committee that wrote the 2011 Comprehensive Plan, which then won the Daniel Burnham Award from the Illinois chapter of the American Planning Association in 2012. When this plan was updated in 2016, I again served on this committee. I believe strongly in preserving our historical and environmental treasures. I have worked towards historic preservation and conservation as a director of the Pierce-Downer Heritage Alliance for many years. I became a councilwoman in 2016 and was re-elected in 2017. I am fully prepared to step up to the office of mayor, but I am not a politician, I'm a citizen planner. If elected, I intend to serve the people of Downers Grove for the next four years, and I will be completely dedicated to Downers Grove. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is David Olson.
Good evening. I'm David Olson, a candidate for mayor of Downers Grove. First, I'd also like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting tonight's forum. Ms. Dornar, I'd like to thank you for serving as our moderator and joining us from Elmhurst, and I want to thank each person here in the audience and those watching on TV for your time and for your willingness to be educated about the candidates for mayor and for village council. I'm running for mayor of Downers Grove because I want to keep our village a great place to live and to grow. I've always believed it's important to give back to the community that's given me so much. That's why I've served the community in many different volunteer and public service roles. It's also why I hope to continue to give back as your next mayor. I've called Downers Grove home my whole life. I grew up here. I went to school here, Hillcrest Elementary School, O'Neill Middle School and Downers Grove South High School. I bought my first house here and I live right on Dunham Road. I'm committed to our village and I'm excited to build on our past accomplishments. As your next mayor, I pledge to keep taxes and fees low, to balance the village budget so we maintain a triple-A bond rating, to encourage more economic development so we can keep property taxes in check, and to fully engage the Downers Grove community to ensure we remain a vibrant and welcoming village for all. I will always seek your ideas and your views on how we can advance together. The best solutions come directly from you, the people, the residents of Downers Grove. So my door is always open, my personal cellphone number is right on my website, and I work to be present in the life of our community, engaging with you on your doorstep, attending as many community events as I can. If you have a question or concern and see me around town, don't hesitate to walk over, say hello and speak to me. I love addressing those concerns directly with residents. The mayor should be the most reachable and accountable person at Village Hall, and I believe my record proves I can provide that type of hands-on leadership. I'm looking forward to the discussion tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Bob Barnett.
Good evening. Thank you also to the league for hosting this event. Our democracy depends on these kinds of opportunities for residents and voters to understand the candidates that are asking for their trust. My name is Bob Barnett and I'm seeking to be your next mayor. Since 1998, I've served this community in a variety of roles: church president, Grove Foundation volunteer, Park District Ad-Hoc Committee member, Village Stormwater Commission member, Liquor Commission member, Little League coach, kids soccer coach, expert navigate pancake flipper, chili judge, and since 2009, on your village council as a commissioner. But perhaps most importantly, in my service to our community, every decision comes first and foremost from the viewpoint of a husband, a father and a homeowner. I understand that every decision we make on the village council affects each of us in the most personal of ways, and my priorities are a safe, secure village that meets the needs of my family and yours. During my tenure, our village has achieved and sustained the highest levels of services measured in police accreditation, fire ISO safety ratings and credit worthiness, while also remaining one of the lowest-cost governments in DuPage County. The political ways of old are ineffective for growth, and they have no place in an interconnected and fast-changing world. Direct connection with the residents, direct connection with voters, direct connection with businesses is important and critical to our long-term success. We have to communicate with each other, and that's on your time, not mine. As a community, we can turn challenges into opportunities. We're in this together, and working together, we can ensure that tomorrow is better than yesterday, and we can make Downers Grove an even better place to live, work and raise families. We can do more together, and it'd be a privilege to serve our community as your mayor for the next four years. Thank you.
David Olson will start with answering our first question. What is your vision for the downtown area for the next 10 years?
Well, thank you. I think the downtown area needs to focus on ensuring that we have vibrant commercial and areas for the people of Downers Grove. I think it's critical that as we look at some of the recent developments, we allow those developments to understand how it's affected traffic patterns, how it affects pedestrian patterns, and we really focus on ensuring that we have businesses and restaurants in great vibrant community in Downers Grove. I think the biggest challenge we have in our downtown is parking. I hear about it every day when I talk to residents. Where do I park? And I think that's going to be something that we need to continue to address, and hopefully perhaps work partner with Metra, with our state, with others to find some creative solutions to address that challenge. Because ultimately, we all want a vibrant downtown that includes residential, that's been built, includes commercial, and it's a destination for the people of Downers Grove.
Thank you. Bob Barnett, what is your vision?
I think we continue to build on what we've done. Downers Grove's downtown has changed dramatically since 1997, and mostly for the better. We have also turned around and looked in the rearview mirror and thought, well, maybe all those changes weren't exactly what we'd planned. So the village council over the last few years has created, put some boundaries on that downtown development. I think what we are now is right-sized. We have sort of enough commercial activity and enough residential activity to support vibrancy. The heart of downtown and the heart of our community is in the downtown. It's where people come to the library, it's where people go to parades, it's where people go to the post office, it's where an enormous number of residents commute through to and from work. So maintaining that vibrancy, a place that is a draw for people not only from our community but from outside of our community, is vital to the success. Businesses and restaurants downtown need to thrive, and in order for them to thrive, they have to be a draw beyond just the boundaries of Downers Grove. It's a downtown we should all be very proud of, and I think that, I think we're in a good place to continue to pursue the commercial activity and growth that makes it worth keeping.
Thank you. Marge Earl.
My vision for Downers Grove for the next 10 years includes a new village hall and police station, and whatever reasonable development that goes along with that to support it. Downtown is the heart of our community, and a good mix of businesses and residents keeps your downtown healthy. Parking is going to be an integral part of that as well. People, I keep hearing even this morning at the downtown management meeting, how parking was an issue. But there's also a streetscaping that needs to be done. There's room for improvement all the way around, but I think the real test of our downtown will be where our SSA lands us in two years with the residents now in the mix of the downtown management, and that will determine which way we will really go.
Thank you. Bob Barnett, what suggestions do you have to address the stormwater issues of the village?
We have to continue to make the investments that we've started on. We've started on a long-range plan of investment in our infrastructure, and then we have to stay firm and fast on the rules that we've put in place to try and manage future development. Back in 1990s, or 2007, the village embarked on a long-term process, hundreds of millions of dollars of investment in infrastructure. Much of the village does not have infrastructure in place, certainly not adequate. That plan is $30 million or so down the road. We need to stay committed to that plan. That is another 15 or 20-year kind of plan. But then this fall, we changed the ordinances in town. So we believe that we have now put a stop to the phenomenon where a person lives in a house for their entire life, two new homes go up and suddenly they have water. We've changed the rules materially to affect that, and so I think that we're on the right path, and what it now is is diligence and working through the plan.
Thank you. Marge Earl, what is your plan for stormwater?
There are longstanding challenges with stormwater and new construction. Neighborhoods are being disrupted by tear-down and smaller-sized lots are being built to the maximum density. It's an ongoing issue. As a council, we have addressed stormwater issues with do-no-harm ordinances, and I would champion the ongoing review of those efforts. We do have a SPA plan in place, which prioritizes the stormwater items that need to be addressed, and we just issued $7 million in bonds to do those projects, the beginning of those projects anyway. And we will continue in a methodical manner, is my thoughts. Also, an important aspect of this is trees. We need to be planting, excuse me, more trees. Trees suck up the stormwater. As the rain falls, the trees will pick up the first inch or so of stormwater fall, and that is a critical component.
Thank you. David Olson.
Stormwater is a critical issue, and it's an issue that affects multiple parts of our community. The village created a stormwater master plan and is going through a process of addressing these projects that have been prioritized, and we need to continue to be making those investments. Some years ago, the village took upon itself a plan to get the streets in more improved condition and move toward 99% acceptable condition for the streets. And similarly, we have a stormwater plan that is funded and needs continued commitment. So I think that a continued commitment to that stormwater plan that's in place in addressing these projects, these priority projects across our village is critical. As I think about it, we also need to continue to engage with residents and to understand what's going on in our neighborhoods, especially with redevelopment, and make sure that redevelopment is not impacting the homes next door. And the council, I think, has taken some significant steps in that direction, but we need to continue to monitor that and make sure that it's working.
Thank you. Marge Earl, you're going first on this question. How will you incorporate the voice of young people in city government? How might you both support and benefit from the thinking of teenagers in improving life in Downers Grove?
Actually, that question makes me think back to something we used to do more often, which was on our boards and commissions, we had a place for a volunteer, a teen volunteer, usually from the high schools. And that was a great place for us to get input into all of our boards and commissions, which then fed into the larger aspect of our government. So I would like to see more of that and that reinstated. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's critical that we hear the voices of people from across our community, and whether it's young people, you know, from young and old. But I think the importance of engaging young people is, you know, the mayor and the council and the political leaders in the community have a responsibility to specifically go out and engage with young people, whether it's in the schools, whether it's in the community, whether they're at. And I think that's a critical role that the mayor plays, to let people know about what village government does and help to inform them. But then further, as Commissioner Earl pointed out correctly, we need to engage young people on our boards and commissions. That's a great opportunity we have to let young people see the insides of village government, to see what local government is all about. And I think that's a way we can engage young people on a substantive basis, but we also have got to make sure that, now that's only a handful of people, we've got to make sure we're out in the community and we're out talking to these people and listening to them and meeting with them and soliciting their input.
Thank you. Bob Barnett.
Boards and commissions is a big part of this because it allows at least one step of sort of formal engagement. We've really fumbled on our boards and commissions over the last probably six years. We simply haven't engaged enough of the community in a cross-section, which certainly includes our younger individuals. But I think being present is probably the biggest factor. We need to engage our community, top to bottom, including the young, where they are on their terms. When we expect people to come here, everybody's lives are full, everybody's lives are busy, and it's a challenge to find time. So it's incumbent upon the mayor as the leader of the council, it's also incumbent upon the balance of the council, to reach out, and when I mean reach out, I mean be present. So that means engaging all of our community where they are on their time, whether that's at sporting events, whether that's through the high school, whether that's through the elementary schools, whether that's in downtown. We have to go out to them. Expecting, I think, for the future, for residents to come find us, whether they be young or old, is the wrong expectation.
Thank you. David Olson, this is your question to start with. With development of the downtown area in Ogden Avenue, what is your plan to increase economic development south of downtown?
Well, I think the southern part of town is a critical part of town. We need a mayor and council that are representing all of Downers Grove, and I think that's incumbent upon all the council to have that vision. We need to make sure that we're working collaboratively with our Economic Development Corporation and with the development community, to engage them and to really draw attention to some of our critical properties. 75th and Lamont Road comes to mind, 63rd and Woodward, are two large commercial sites that we need to focus on, and we need to make sure that our Economic Development Corporation and our village staff are focused on finding a solution for commercial redevelopment. Commercial redevelopment is critical because every dollar of sales tax takes away a dollar of property tax effectively. That's a great method that we can use to address the tax challenges that people have, and it also brings new amenities to Downers Grove. And I think specifically to this question, this is the southern part of Downers Grove. So I look forward to working on that.
Thank you. Bob Barnett.
Our Economic Development Corporation has worked for years on both 63rd and Woodward and 75th and Lamont Road, and there are some unique property ownership and agreement and, frankly, legal issues in play there. Our Economic Development Corporation's been in place since 2006, so through three mayors and dozens of council people, there has never been a lack of focus on those two parcels. The problem is that there is a point where the village council has to decide, do we want to take further action? We have to this point resisted things like eminent domain, things like condemnation, because we think that those things don't reflect the values of our residents. But make no mistake, that those parcels are being worked on. I was told not long ago that if those were on Ogden Avenue, they'd already be developed. That's just simply not the case. Economic Development Corporation works diligently, there are deals right now in the works, but as you can imagine, when there's multiple pieces of property and they're working their way through the bankruptcy court process, it's not easy and it isn't quick.
Thank you. Marge Earl.
There are challenges to our sales tax base anywhere in town, which must be improved in order to keep our property taxes for the village low. But there are specific challenges in our retail centers, especially at 75th and Lamont Road and 63rd and Woodward. I would work vigorously with the council staff, our Economic Development Corporation and the private sector to restore these ISOs. But there's also an opportunity for, if there's any opportunities for redevelopment that aren't just retail, I would also be open to those. Right now, these are big swaths that contain just retail. Maybe it's time for a mix in these places, and I would absolutely be to open to that prospect as well.
Thank you. Bob Barnett, you start with this question. What role can, should, the village play in helping mitigate the effects of climate change?
The village plays a role because we're such a big part of our community's daily activities. This village council and many before it have placed as a high priority environmental sustainability. We have engaged in many opportunities to positively affect climate change. We have one of the greenest fleets in the nation. We work with, we work with the development community to try and establish standards for development and for stormwater that affect concerns for the environment. We established an award program for businesses to try and encourage private entities to engage in behavior that is beneficial to the climate. I think the village's role is to take that and always have part of our thought process be, the margin is always, is this decision, whatever it is, whether it has to do with speeds on our streets, or street design, or stormwater design, is this action we're about to take consistent with trying to improve environmental sustainability? I don't see us moving off of that. We've done quite a bit of that, and I suspect we'll continue. It'd be the right thing to do.
Thank you. Marge Earl.
The village does have one of the greenest fleets in North America, which we've won awards for, top 10 greenest fleets in North America. So we're doing our part to try to mitigate some of the air issues with through the green fleet. But also, I would push for our new village hall police station, which we terribly need, to be more energy efficient and more green. And we have, as a council, trended towards more green things as a whole village. The reduction in paper, our packets which used to be delivered in person on paper now come digitally, and we have made an effort in this village to go digitally so that we can cut down on environmental waste. Thank you.
David Olson.
Well, thank you. I think the village plays a role, first in its own operations and making sure that our operations are environmentally sustainable. As we look for the review of a new village hall, a new police station, I think that's a significant opportunity to improve the efficiency of these buildings. I mean, these buildings currently are old, and especially this village hall, inefficient. And there's a big opportunity we have to improve the efficiency, the energy efficiency, which addresses that. But I think we also need to continue to work collaboratively with our Environmental Concerns Commission, which is a longstanding commission in the village, to work, to find other creative solutions where we can work collaboratively with other entities, whether it's our partner governments, whether it's entities in the private sector, to address environmental sustainability and ensure, this is Downers Grove. Grove is a part of our name, and environmental sustainability is really an important piece of what we do. So we need to make sure that we're working collaboratively and creatively to find those solutions.
Thank you. All right. I'm told that this is a very important question, but it's a very long question, so you're going to have to listen. Based on the fact our community has 14 boards and commissions with specific responsibilities involving review, decision, action committees, or advisory action-only committees, seven out of the 14 appear to be under the review, decision, action process. They tend to meet fairly regularly, and reports are reviewed by the village council and mayor. These are Police Pension Board, Fire Pension Board, Board of Fire Police Commission, Zoning Board, Planning Commission, Library Board, Liquor Commission. The remaining seven boards, commissions either have failed to meet at all or have met no more than three times in 2018, or not at all in 2019, and thus it appears we are missing the advisory action process. These include Transportation and Parking Commission, Environmental Concerns Commission, Stormwater and Flood Plan Oversight Commission, Architectural Design Review Board, Technology, Human Services Commission, now Human Services Ad-Hoc Committee, Community Events Commission. Based on the level of applicants for these 14 committees, which average 65 applicants for each board commission, the question is, please state your opinion on having an assigned point- having an assigned point council person responsible for reporting on one or two of the fourteen boards or commissions, along with adding a standing agenda item on the village council meeting, board and commission's monthly report, to ensure a monthly status report and/or comment is made on the record for each of these fourteen committees, and thus ensuring information generated at these committee meetings are truly brought before the village council and mayor and fellow townspeople. Note, the point council person would not attend their assigned committee meetings, but merely be responsible to read minutes and/or be notified by the chairperson of the committee of status of the month. Your opinion is? Marge Earl?
My opinion is, is some of these boards and commissions are agenda-driven by petition, and so there's not always a monthly meeting. Some of these boards and commissions also, the ones that meet more regularly are, some of them are required by law to meet the way they do, and some of them are advisory. But I don't think it's a bad idea. We've always had, there tends to be liaisons to the boards and commissions, but they don't always have a report out, and that's something we probably could do better on. And I think that the boards and commissions maybe could meet more regularly, but those minutes are always in the agenda packets. Whatever board and commission meetings we get are available to the public, maybe we could make them a little more transparent on the websites as well, so they're easier to find, so that everyone could read them.
Thank you. David Olson?
Well, I think the boards and commissions are a really important part of our process. And as we look at boards and commissions, I think we need to continually reevaluate, are these commissions meeting? And if they're not meeting, why aren't they meeting? Is it because there's nothing to talk about? Is it because that we don't have enough staff time, that staff is overburdened, and that's a challenge? So we really need, is it because the members aren't able to meet and aren't showing up to meetings? And we've had those challenges as well. So we need to continue to assess that. We have had, and traditionally, the village council has had council liaisons or a point person assigned to each commission, but I think that that role, and that goes to the next mayor, is to direct how we want that to work in the future. And I think it would be valuable to continue that process and to make sure that there is a council point person, and there's a little bit more formal process of understanding what these commissions are doing, and also that incentivizes the commissions and their staff to be very active, and I think that's important as well.
Thank you. Bob Barnett?
I mentioned earlier that boards and commissions is kind of where we've fumbled a little bit when we were talking about engaging our youth. I think we've fumbled a lot bit on boards and commissions. They are an opportunity to leverage and access the skills and talents of our community. We have nearly a hundred people potentially involved in helping the village council and helping your village government determine, you know, find information, evaluate information, and decide best practices in a host of subjects, from the liquor commission to the environmental concerns commission, and on down the line. I think that we really should reconsider that whole program. I think that we need to leverage it up, I think we need to take advantage of it. I keep saying that we need to do more. We do need to do more. I think as a community, the services we're providing, we're providing well, I think there are more of the necessary, and we need to do more better. In order to do that, without a big increase in overhead burden, we have an opportunity to take advantage of the resident volunteers that want to serve their community. Whether that means it's a council person assigned, probably something like that, but I think the next council, and certainly I as mayor, will evaluate what that process looks like, with the goal being to engage our residents in a more formal and broader sense to help the council.
Thank you. David Olson, you'll start answering this question. Do you intend to finish the four-year term if elected? What do you see as your future plans?
Well, I do intend to finish the four-year term if elected, and I know that's been a question that folks have asked me. This is an important role. The mayor of Downers Grove is the leader of the community, perceived leader, not only within the community, but also externally as well. And I think the opportunity that I have here as mayor is, because of some of the previous roles I've had internally in Downers Grove, and also externally at the regional and state level, it gives me a really unique perspective and a unique opportunity to represent and to engage our community across the state and across this region. Because Downers Grove is not an island. We operate in a vibrant regional economy and a state economy, and we've got to be working in that level. And so I do intend to work for all four years of this term to represent the people of Downers Grove, to advocate for the people of Downers Grove, and to be their voice.
Thank you. Bob Barnett?
Yes, I will serve the full four terms if I'm fortunate enough to be elected mayor. My role and my goal has always been to find a way to contribute to my community. It started when I first moved to town in my church and has progressed towards working on behalf of the residents as an elected official. But that's my only goal. I have no interest in any higher office. I will not only serve this term, I also won't take an appointment, I won't seek another elected office beyond this one. This job to me is one that I really enjoy. It's fun. I'm an engineer, I'm a little bit geeky with trying to solve problems, and I like doing that on behalf of our residents. It's a privilege. It's a privilege and an honor to serve this community, and I'm looking forward to doing that longer than my current council stint. It's been a lot of fun the last ten years, and I'd like to continue as mayor, but absolutely, I'll serve the full four years right here.
Thank you. Marge Earl?
I absolutely intend to finish the four-year term if elected. I have no future plans for higher office. I am dedicated to Downers Grove. I will do what I need to within, in the village of Downers Grove, as well as at any other governmental level that Downers Grove needs representation at. My focus has always been local government and hyper-local government, and you can't get more local than this.
Thank you. Bob Barnett, with the increase of new expensive housing construction in the village, how can we as a village ensure that we remain socio-economically diverse community? Would you welcome affordable housing?
That's a really tough one. We have erred on the side of sort of free enterprise and free market in Downers Grove for, long before my term on the council. We've taken some efforts to study the subject matter of affordable housing, and it's an issue. It's absolutely an issue. We hear regular stories of folks who've grown up here and aren't able to come back to their hometown. The challenge comes from the flip side. For many, many people, many families, in fact, I'd suggest maybe even most in Downers Grove, their home is their single biggest investment. And so if we decide to legislate in some way how that home can be either rebuilt, replaced, or added on to, we have the effect of essentially holding down potentially people's retirements. It is a double-edged sword, one which we will continue to have to work through. I think being aware of it and trying to work with other government agencies and other private entities to help people find those first homes and finance those first homes is something the village can do. But I'm generally opposed to the idea of legislation that causes us to limit future construction or tear downs.
Thank you. Marge Earl?
Affordable housing is a topic I'm pretty familiar with. As I sat on the, that was the first committee I ever sat on, was the ad hoc committee for affordable housing. And when we studied it, the affordable housing isn't just a village, and our village is long and narrow. So affordable housing is taken as more of a, if you look in a circle around your village, is there affordable housing within a range? And affordable housing means different things to different people. It's not always low-income housing. It is, can the people who live in your community, stay in your, and work in your community, stay in your community? And some of the answer lies in the not overbuilding the smaller lots in our town and preserving some of the smaller housing stock that we currently have. It becomes more difficult to do when you've, when the values of these lots are going up, but that is the goal.
Thank you. David Olson?
I think preserving socioeconomic diversity in our village is a good goal for the village, but it's a challenge because we do not want to step on the private sector, people's home values, and people have a significant value and investment in their homes, and we don't want to certainly overregulate that so that they cannot, you know, sell their homes or have to take a loss in their homes, and that's, I think, a real challenge here. But as we think about this, I really believe we need to be, work collaboratively with our other governmental entities, and whether it's the state and federal government, but also other local governments, to ensure that people have opportunities and can find opportunities to find housing within Downers Grove or nearby to Downers Grove, if they're working within Downers Grove. And I would also note that it's important that our regulations on building don't incentivize, don't unduly incentivize reconstruction and redevelopment, that they also allow people to have their current home.
This question, Marge Earl, will start as mayor. Do you support stronger campaign finance and ethic rules related to those who work for and do business with the village?
Yes.
Great. David Olson?
Yes.
Bob Barnett?
I do.
Let's make it, let's make it unanimous.
I'm going to take a little bit more of the two minutes. We had some in place in Downers Grove, and they were reversed several years ago. I think it's important to err on the side of caution. The rules that we had in place, some said were marginal in terms of constitutionality, and they may have been, but I thought it was important to set an expectation for how folks like us see elected office and how we finance that in the village. And so additional rules that prevent people from perennially campaigning for money, additional rules that prevent people from working and soliciting contributions from vendors and people that have contracts with the village, I think those things should all be enhanced. They used to be, they were watered down not long ago, and I think that was a mistake.
Thank you. David Olson, do you favor a new special service area to financially support downtown? Why or why not?
I think that this is a question that's being addressed currently by the downtown, the ad hoc committee, and I think it's important that we listen to and engage with the business community and the residential community in the downtown to understand what is needed and what we can do that will support the downtown and support its activities, but also ensure that the downtown is fairly represented. The downtown is a community asset, it's not just an asset to the people who live in the downtown. So we need to make sure that as we think about how we're going to fund the important services and important infrastructure in our downtown, that we appropriately balance services and infrastructure that's specifically for that area, but also services that have a more general community value, and finance that appropriately and accordingly with that differentiation. And so I think that that's going to require some study, and I look forward to working collaboratively to address that issue with the businesses and residents of downtown.
Thank you. Bob Barnett?
I do. We have in Downers Grove two public-private partnerships, Economic Development Corporation, which we touched on earlier, and downtown management, that have been, I think, as we look back, have been very successful. The downtown management has been funded by an SSA, and while that SSA is expiring soon, much of what we see and enjoy with our downtown, whether it's residents from outside the downtown that come there to enjoy it, or residents in the downtown that have selected to live there, is a function of those SSA activities. If we, if residents and landowners in the downtown choose not to retain the SSA, then we'll have to find another way to fund those activities. And it may mean, in a world where we're trying to keep property taxes as low as possible, it may mean that many of those things simply don't happen. Those two activities, economic development and downtown management, have been, I think, very successful in our community. I'd like to see them continued.
Thank you. Marge Earl?
Yes, I do support a new SSA for downtown, to the extent that the businesses and residents in the downtown management are studying this and wish to continue this. But I also believe it's going to, it will be and should be at a much lower rate than is currently being assessed. Whether it was intentional or unintentional, the rate at the end of this SSA term has gotten to be quite high, where some residents are paying as much as $2,000 a year on their tax bill, maybe more, just to downtown. And that is on top of all of their other property taxes. So that is a real concern. They need to be getting good value for the money they are paying, and they need to be assessed fairly for that.
Thank you. So in order to stay on track with our next debate, this will be your last question, and we'll start with Bob Barnett. In your opinion, why did the recent village hall police station deal fail? What should the next step be to move the process forward?
It's, the most recent deal, in my opinion, failed because we balked. Time kills all deals. And we had an opportunity about eighteen months ago to have largely the similar deal in place. We, as a council, decided to wait and see what happens. We weren't sure, we weren't certain about the state. I don't see that clarity ever coming, and so we waited. And while we, at least on a surface level, one would argue, we got a better deal presented to us, I think if you consider the effect of time, we had higher interest rates, if you affect the effects of things like tariffs and construction costs, it was largely a wash. What made that second deal better was the addition of townhomes, which could have been added eighteen months ago. What the councils in the future need to do is when we have an opportunity to get an enormous portion of the funding for these two necessary facilities privately, we need to take the deal. There are many communities across the state that have to do this all on their own. Downers, at some point, will be forced to do so if we don't pull it together and get another deal.
Thank you. Marge Earl?
I believe the deal failed because the developer promised more than could be offered. Sometimes when something is too good to be true, like eight million dollars for less land in a lower building, it turns out that it really was too good to be true. So hopefully, this next time around, I don't think that waiting was a bad thing. I think that we had empty apartments that hadn't even been built yet to fill, and we needed to wait. We couldn't put in more apartments and, at the time, and take away from our own private sector that was trying to fill apartments at the same time. We couldn't compete with ourselves, in essence. And so townhouses at the time seemed like a good deal, but it was a phased prospect, and that was troublesome, too. So we waited a little bit. We were approached with a private deal, it didn't work out, we're back to square one, and we will sit down and we will work through it.
Thank you. David Olson?
Well, the previous deal, it appears the private sector partner pulled out, and so we're back to where we are, and so we need to address the village hall police stations. It's an important thing, it needs to be top on the priority list for the next council. I think that there's a lot of concern that I've heard in the community about another significant high-density apartment development or condo development, and so I would move immediately to issue an RFP for townhomes to assess the feasibility of this option, and to see if there's an option that we could get some private sector development with a very limited impact on the taxpayers, to get this project done at a limited impact and also not significantly impact the density of the downtown. So I think that that's a way forward, but obviously, this is going to be a collaborative process with the next council, with staff, to ensure that we get the best deal possible for the residents of Downers Grove.
Thank you. We'll move to your closing statements, and we'll go in reverse order, so we'll start with Bob Barnett.
Once again, thank you to the legal and voters for hosting this forum. I've participated in several of these, and they're always very well done. I appreciate your investment in our community as well. Ten years ago, I first campaigned for the village council and talked about a community with a bright future that faced serious economic uncertainty. I urged the community with frugal, prudent decision-making could thrive. This is our community, and for many, it's where we make our single biggest investment. It's where we raise our families. It's where we establish roots and memories. Every challenge we face is an opportunity to make our community stronger, safer, more appealing, more accepting, more innovative, more welcoming, a better investment for residents and businesses alike. Over the last ten years, that's exactly what we've done. This community is markedly better in every metric that's ever measured, that communities are ever measured by, and we're still doing it at a very low cost. We can excel. We can excel further and faster, but to do so will take experience, attention to details, innovation, and leadership unencumbered by politics. As mayor, the job is about identifying and meeting the needs of residents, employees, businesses, and colleagues. Service, the hard work of caring for a community and others, has no room for political ambition. Once you're entrusted to do a specific job, you should do your best to do that job. Service above self finds joy in helping others grow and succeed, in solving problems, and working with residents and staff alike. I'm asking again for you to trust me to serve our community. I'd like to be our next mayor. I'd like to be our next mayor, and I'm asking for your vote on April 2nd. Let's do more together. Thank you.
David Olson.
Thanks again to the League of Women Voters for hosting the forum. Dorner for serving as our moderator. And thanks to everyone who's chosen to spend some time with us tonight to be more informed about the race for mayor. It's been a productive conversation. And as we conclude, I want to emphasize the part of the campaign that's most important to me, and the part of my platform that's most important to me: you, the residents. Ultimately, the mayor reflects and represents you, the residents of Downers Grove. As we face the challenges and opportunities ahead, I know the best solutions come directly from our local residents. That's why my door is always open. It's why I've spent my time in public service reaching out to people in person and listening to them. And it's why I'll continue to do even more of that as mayor. My personal cell phone number is right on my website. I'll continue meeting you at your homes, at community events, and just walking around downtown or wherever else we can connect. I look forward to collaborating with you as your, as your mayor. I'm David S. Olson. I'm running to be your mayor of Downers Grove, and I'm humbly asking for your vote on April 2nd. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mary Drew.
Downers Grove is so much more than the core services we were forced to adopt during the recession. But that doesn't mean spending millions more tax dollars. It means being creative with the tax dollars you have. And that would mean, that would be my goal. In conclusion, I would be your mayor who knows the issues and not a politician giving you empty promises. I'm reminded briefly of a time when I was working the information tent at the Rotary Grove Fest, and a new visitor from Australia had come and was walking through Grove Fest and stopped and looked around in awe, and walked up to me and said, "What is this?" And I wasn't sure what she meant. And I said, "What do you mean, 'what is this'?" And she said, "What is going on? What is this?" And I said, "This is the village of Downers Grove. This is how we celebrate." And she goes, "Wow." And I go, "Yeah. Aren't we lucky?" Election Day is Tuesday, April 2nd, and early voting begins Monday, March 18th. You can find me on Facebook or at MargeForMayor.com. I ask that you vote for me, Marge For Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Tonight's League of Women Voters candidate forum is being recorded and will air on DGTV 6 at 7:00 and 10:00 p.m. each Friday, Saturday, and Sunday up till the election. The program will also be posted to the Village YouTube channel. So our time is up for this forum. Your participation as a candidate and as voters is essential to preserving our freedom in our country. Please remember to vote on or before April 2nd, as one vote can decide the election, and that one vote could be yours. So please join me in showing your appreciation for these candidates. This forum is for those seeking to be commissioner for the village of Downers Grove. There are five candidates running for three positions. Candidate Jacob Kist is unable to attend tonight's forum. The remaining candidates have agreed to abide by the rules set forth prior to this forum. They will each present a two-minute introductory statement, the order determined right before this by drawing numbers. Then the questions are going to be one-minute answers, closing statements in reverse order of the introductory statements, and they will be one-minute long. League members will be, will be keeping time here, and candidates will strictly adhere to the time limits. So we'll start with two-minute introductory remarks, starting with Nicole Wallace.
Good evening. My name is Nicole Wallace. I'm running for Downers Grove Village Council, and I'm pleased to be here for tonight's discussion. I would first like to thank the League of Women Voters, Ms. Dorner, our moderator, and the community for participating in the updated consolidated election. My husband Mark and I moved to Downers Grove nine years ago this April. We have two daughters, ages five and three, and we're fortunate to live in an amazing community that has good schools, great amenities and location, and a reasonable commute to the school I teach at. For the past 14 years, I've been a high school teacher, the past nine spent working with special education students. I'm also a proud member of the Downers Grove Rotary Club. Since 2016, I've served on village council, where I've addressed a variety of issues for residents. We've maintained the village's AAA bond rating, balanced the budget, and enacted stronger stormwater regulations. With Tobacco 21, peer jury, and the retail sale of dogs, cats, and rabbits, we heard you and we took action. I want to continue to encourage development in our town while maintaining community character. Despite unforeseen issues, I want to continue to work on a fiscally responsible solution for the new police station and village hall. I truly enjoy serving our community, and I strongly believe that my background has taught me to successfully work with just about anyone to solve problems. Unfortunately, politics has become especially divisive lately, and it's caused even more distrust in our government. I share these concerns. However, this is a municipal office that is nonpartisan, and while we may not agree on all issues, I will work tirelessly to reach compromise and do what is best for our residents. Again, I'm Nicole Wallace, candidate for Downers Grove Village Council, and I look forward to tonight's insightful discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Rich Culavany.
Yes, thank you, first of all, League of Women Voters, and Jan, thank you for moderating. I'm not a politician. I'm a very active volunteer, and I serve because I find you can really make a difference. I grew up in Downers Grove. I married my high school sweetheart, Kathleen Callahan. We raised our three children here, and now eight of our 11 grandchildren. Most of my career was actually in the enterprise application software business, where I traveled to all 50 states and some 24 countries. These senior leadership positions provided me a rich level of experience that I've been using to help with historic preservation, the Pierce-Downer Heritage Alliance, and the Downers Grove Historical Society, where I serve as a director and treasurer. I've served on the plan commission for the past two years, and the zoning board of appeals for 18 months before that. I've attended approximately 80% of the village council meetings and workshops in person during the last four years so that I could be better informed. My career moved aside of state twice, and twice we moved back to Downers Grove. These times made Kathy and me appreciate just how special this town is. However, Downers Grove is also facing some serious challenges. The tax rates in Downers are lower than surrounding communities, but they're still too high, which is forcing people to move. We need to reduce the real estate tax burden by expanding our tax base through balanced economic development that enhances and does not destroy the character of our village. We need to preserve the character of our neighborhoods by protecting the growth in Downers Grove. We need to figure out a way where police and firefighters can afford to live in Downers so they can raise their families in the community they serve. We should use our wonderful historic areas in our downtown to draw diners, shoppers, new residents, and new businesses to Downers. I intend to listen to and serve all the residents of Downers Grove to make it an even better place to live, and I'm asking for your vote on April 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you. Leslie Sadowski-Fugit.
Good evening. I'm Leslie Sadowski-Fugit, and I'm running for Downers Grove Commissioner. First, thank you to the League of Women Voters and to Jan Dorner for moderating this, and thank you to everyone who has come out and who will be watching this later. I'm running because I purchased my home in Downers Grove in December 2012, just before the memorable flood of April 2013. While my family was lucky, I'm sad to say that many of my neighbors experienced extensive flooding and lost a lot of personal property. Stormwater is of great importance to me as a former Ohio Department of Natural Resources employee who helped conduct stormwater trainings for city planners and other professionals. I have a master's degree in a science field, and I work in science education, and I would like to use my stormwater expertise, as well as my experience with complex data, to bring evidence-based solutions to our community. I'm also committed to ensuring that our public services continue to function at a high level. Our Downers Grove first responders have exceptionally short response times, and that is only made possible by keeping our fire and police staffing at their current levels. While these salaries and pensions are certainly a big financial commitment, they ensure that our residents and businesses stay safe and healthy. As a young child, I lost my father to a heart attack at home. These response times in our community were higher than the local average due to cost-cutting measures. I don't want my neighbors here in Downers Grove to experience the same if it can be prevented. Finally, Downers Grove is facing important financial issues in the coming years. Our downtown special service area funding source is expiring, as we know, and we need a visionary council to lead us into the next phase of planning. I want to be sure that we have transparent processes that the council can follow for board and commission appointments and for economic decisions. I will use my education and leadership skills to engage in two-way communication with our residents and businesses to ensure the sustainability of the village of Downers Grove for my daughter's generation and for future generations. Thanks.
Jeffrey Jacobson.
So I want to thank the League of Women Voters, and I want to thank everyone here that stayed and listened to us. I'm also to the people that are going to be watching it on video. It's, it's very important that we get involved in Downers Grove. It's where we live. It's our city. I've lived in Downers Grove since 1995. We chose Downers Grove because of multiple of criteria such as education, safety, and economic growth, mostly because it's a great city to live in. I've raised my four kids in Downers Grove. All of them have graduated from Downers Grove North. My education was a bachelor in science and computer science with a minor in accounting, and I took enough classes to sit for the CPA, which I didn't. My education included biochemistry, physics, as well as calculus. Later, I went to night school to get a Juris Doctorate in Law and became a lawyer. You need a councilman that is intelligent and solves problems. I am that person. I've been involved in Downers Grove for a long time, from volunteering for Park District and YMCA youth activities. Later, I became the co-president of the Downers Grove North High School. I've been very involved. I've been in the middle school as a vice president. I've been on committees in Downers Grove. I'm currently sitting for my second term on the liquor commission. We hear liquor applications and violations. In my two terms, I've balanced the safety of the public with the needs of businesses. We need people on the council that can listen to what the residents and businesses need and then come up with the best solution. That's why I'm running. The council needs to work on reducing redundant costs, as you heard. I strongly support the fire and police services. I want to make Downers Grove as the place for people to reside and bring businesses. The future's going to bring challenges to our council that we need to be prepared and able to handle. I hope you choose me for one of the council members come April 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you. Rich Culavany.
Culavany.
Culavany, sorry.
That's all right.
We'll be the first to answer this question. How can Downers Grove do more to be welcoming to all residents regardless of age, race, ethnicity, religion, or sexual orientation, specifically preventing and addressing hate crimes, targeting, and discrimination?
First of all, I think it starts in schools. In 1987, we moved back from Dayton, Ohio, to Downers Grove. And we specifically picked Downers Grove because of the diversity. I wanted my kids growing up in a mixed community where it wasn't normative that every child would get a new car at the age of 16. And I think it's also incumbent upon the residents to get involved and to lead by example in that respect. And certainly, as part of the council, I think we need to reach out to people of all communities who welcome them and, and let them know that they're welcoming.
Thank you. Leslie Sadowski-Fugit.
Yeah, that is something that's of central importance to me. I manage school programs at a zoo downtown, and it is very important for me that, that we understand diversity and we regularly undergo diversity and inclusion training and make sure that we really have empathy for those who may not have had the same experiences as we have. So one area in which I think that we could do a great job is really trying to recruit that diversity in our boards, commissions, and other appointments. That is a really nice way to show the community that you're valuing the voices of everyone in your community. So I would like to start with that, and also just make sure, again, that we are having quality two-way conversations with our residents so that we know if there's a problem in the community, and we can start to take those steps to fix them.
Thank you. Jeffrey Jacobson.
So I think it starts at home initially, but for government, I think we need to make sure we stop it if we see it. We have a very welcoming community. We need to reach out to everyone. We need to listen to everyone. As a council member, it's our responsibility, no matter what age, sex, national origin, religion, gender they are, that we listen to them, that our ordinances don't discriminate. And I, and I think, you know, we have the community that's very diverse. You know, I look around in Downers Grove, and we need to keep it that way. We need to be accepting to everyone.
Thank you. Nicole Wallace.
Thank you. I think we need to continue to make sure that we are an inclusive and welcoming community. There's a lot of unconscious bias out there in today's society. Maybe that means offering diversity training to our boards and commissions. Maybe that means offering diversity training to our village staff and village council. We can also program some public spaces potentially with educational and cultural activities that promote diverse cultures. People want to learn about these things, and I believe that when we come together, that, and we can share that knowledge, that some of these social divisions often dissolve. So I believe if we continue learning, continue growing in this area, that we can continue to be successful in being welcoming to anyone out there who would like to be in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. What suggestions do you have to address the stormwater issues of the village, starting with Leslie Sadowski-Fugit?
I have quite a few. That is something, again, that, that is one of the reasons why I decided to run. So I would like to take a more holistic approach of our stormwater situation, and instead of looking at small parcels and doing piecemeal solutions, I want to also take a look at the larger watershed. So for example, I'm on St. Joseph's Creek. I would prefer not to have small parcels and say, "Well, this area needs this little bit of retention, and this area needs this brush cleaned up." But I really want to look at how things upstream are affecting things downstream. So I'd like to take a look at stormwater retention. It was mentioned earlier that trees also provide a lot of storage, as do native swampy prairie plants that we have, used to have an abundance here in Illinois. So I'd really like to use a combination of ideas that we have in some of our stormwater plans, and again, take a look at it with a more holistic view, to see which things perhaps we could do upstream that might make things better, both upstream and downstream. So again, that, that larger watershed approach.
Thank you. Jeffrey Jacobs.
So it's interesting, when I read the minutes for 2018 for the village council, this was probably the number-one complaint that residents made at the council meetings. We have, and I don't pretend to be an expert, we have a plan that's been put in place by the experts, by, you know, people that know what they're doing. It needs to be implemented. The zoning ordinances have changed to try to help this out. At the last council meeting a couple nights ago, there was a vote where there was a big discussion on the stormwater. One of the large buildings in downtown Downers Grove now retains water under the building and flows it out into the sewer system no faster than had the building not been there. One of the things I heard from the residents isn't it's a stormwater problem. What I've heard is a water damage problem. Their house is being damaged, and they're concerned about it. And so we need to make sure our plan is updated frequently.
Thank you. Nicole Wallace.
Thank you. We enacted, as a council, stronger stormwater regulations back in October, and I think we need to continue to watch and monitor how those go. Village staff did extensive research into a path forward for us. There were two stormwater committee meetings. We had seven council discussions on this, and there was also a stakeholder meeting. So I'd like to continue to monitor what we have currently put in place, and then go from there, modify as needed. We have our stormwater fee also, which I know a lot of people are not thrilled with. However, that was put into place as part of this master plan, and it's been put back into the community with the idea of onsite retention and continuing to build the infrastructure that we lack. Thank you.
Thank you. Rich Culavany.
Yeah, first of all, I think we need to also continue working with the DuPage County Stormwater Commission to make sure that we have a regional approach. Secondly, I think it's important that we enforce the ordinances that are in place. I sit on the plan commission, and not too many weeks ago, we had a request to split two lots to reconfigure them into being 56.29 feet wide, when it was very much the, the feeling of the village council that any new development and any new subdivisions would be 75 feet. I, I actually stood as being one of the two people who voted against that approval, and was very pleased that the village council kind of saw it my way because of the history that was involved there. We have to do a great job at retaining our trees. We should also look at areas where we can have wetlands, like Second and Cumner is now a wetland. When I was a kid, it was a wetland. They chose to build there. It was an improper thing to do.
Thank you. What is one service or approach to an issue that a neighboring community does that you would consider bringing to Downers Grove? would consider bringing to Downers Grove? And we'll start with Jeffrey Jacobsen.
So, living here for almost 23 years, I don't think there's a community or city that does things better than Downers Grove. I might be biased. I think we can improve on things that we do. We're very lean in a city. We're cutting back on staff, on fire, on police. I've heard that, and I was surprised that probably right at this moment, there's five to seven police officers on staff. I think we can do better with having more law enforcement. All we're doing now is reacting. We need police officers out there. The Roar incident is an example that bothered me. There were a lot of officers that responded, but we need the resources to stop. If someone needed to go and check and make sure that person gave up their guns, so I think that's an area that we can improve. Thanks.
Thank you. Nicole Wallace.
You know, I somewhat echo what Jeff said in terms of, we have a phenomenal village here. This, one of the reasons why my husband and I chose to live here instead of a surrounding area was because of all the services, amenities, and things like that in Downers Grove. Can we improve? Can we continue to grow? Absolutely. You know, tree preservation, I know that's a lot of things that, one of the things that people talk about. That's something that other towns actually have, I think, more strict things set in place in terms of trees. But other than that, I think we continue to expand on what we're doing. A lot of times, when things come to us, we actually do look at surrounding communities, depending on what the issue is, to see what other places are doing. I think we need to continue to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Rich Culavany?
Yeah, related to specific services, I don't have an answer for that right now. But what I do is I'm very open to going to other communities. I've actually traveled to other suburbs and met with their planners and gone to their meetings, and I think it's a great way to find out if there are things that we should be doing differently. In one regard, it was around the area of downtown design review and how we handle the residents' complaints about the building that went in at Main and Maple. So, I took it upon myself and a friend of mine who's involved, we actually went to places like Glenview, Wheaton, Glen Ellen, Park Ridge, Barrington. We called the City of Elmers. We asked them, "What are you doing? What would you do differently if you were to start over again?" I don't think there's anything wrong with learning from other people's staff. It's free staff work. It doesn't cost us a dime, and it's all public information, and you have to go and meet with them. You can't just look at their websites because you find a big difference between what they have on their website and what they're doing in reality.
Thank you. Leslie Sadowski-Fugut.
So, it's not necessarily a service, but one thing that I would really like us to look into is, I know a lot of surrounding communities have participated in Soul Smart, which is incentivizing renewable energy, and it's something that's put together by the Department of Energy. And I would really like us to look into thinking about renewable energies to make sure, again, there was the climate change question that was asked previously. I think that's something that the younger generations are really starting to take hold of, and I would like to be a little bit more of a leader on that.
Thank you. Nicole Wallace will start. What is your vision for the downtown area for the next 10 years?
I think we need to continue to support the vision that's laid out in the comprehensive plan, which is also located on our website. I look forward to, we currently have a downtown ad hoc committee running. I look forward to seeing what the results are of that because I think it's important to engage residents and business owners to help guide where downtown goes. I'm hoping that these empty facilities are developed in a manner that's consistent with the surrounding building, so I think that should be a goal of ours. Amenities and landscaping should be provided with consistency and what the downtown community wants. Again, this is subject to what the ad hoc committee results look like, but I look forward to looking at those findings and helping, letting that help guide us to where downtown goes.
Thank you. Rich Culavany?
I have a vision for Downers Grove, to make it the most amazing suburb in the Chicago area. And the reason for that is we are competing with other municipalities to draw people to our village. One of the primary reasons they come here, you have millennials who live in the city. They like to live in the city because of everything that's going on there, and you know when they move out to the suburbs, when it's time to send their kids to school. And the first thing they check is a train schedule. And then shortly after that, they look at the schools. I think we need to have a downtown that gives some residents some say. I think it's incumbent upon the village to be able to tell developers that we have downtown design guidelines, and you should be able to line your developments up with durable quality buildings that will actually attract people here. We need to draw people to our community. And the best way to do that is by having an amazing thing, some alcoves, rooftop dining, El Fresco dining outside. These are the things that will draw people to Downers Grove.
Thank you. Leslie Sadowski-Fugut.
Yes, so, my approach would be to make sure that we are being collaborative with our businesses, residents, and the Downtown Management Corporation for the very first thing. They are the ones that are really living the downtown every single day, and their voice is very much important. But I, based on the current comprehensive plan and the way things are going, it appears as though a mix of retail and the service industry are going to be important. So, for example, hair salons and experiences, restaurants. And so, I think that it's important that we see that that's kind of where our money is now going. So, having a nice mix of that, as well as, again, not only consistent landscaping, but also trying to plant natives. We have a lot of wonderful gardening groups here in the village, and I think that we should take advantage of the great volunteers that we have, like we talked about before, and make it a little bit more beautiful naturally, as well as reducing water by planting natives.
Thank you. Jeffrey Jacobsen.
So, I have the advantage of moving here in 95. The downtown wasn't as vibrant as it is now. It's completely different than it was some 20 years ago. We need to make sure we work with the businesses to keep them there. On the Liquor Commission, every once in a while, businesses come to us and ask us for something. The ordinance doesn't allow it. And we work together. We just recently approved an ordinance change to allow businesses to have umbrellas on the sidewalk, which is something they needed and they can get for free. I've actually worked on changing the ordinances for the Liquor Commission to make it clear for businesses so they can function. But I don't want to focus just on the downtown. We have issues on the other parts of Downers Grove that need to be worked on. We've got a huge shopping mall that has failed, and we need to do something about it. So, we need to focus on all of Downers Grove.
Thank you. Rich Culavany? How will you incorporate the voice of young people in city government? How might you both support and benefit from the thinking of teenagers in improving life in Downers Grove?
Well, I have a bunch of teenagers who happen to be going to the same high school that Kathy and I went to, so I get a lot of input. We see a lot of people of all shapes, sizes, colors, creeds come to our home. I think it's just a matter of outreach. I think it's a matter of involvement with the schools, and just showing up at places, being there, listening to those people, engaging with them, hearing what they have to say, and perhaps even having junior members involved on the commission, very much like those who want to get involved in government can show up as a special class project. I believe there are things we could do around historic preservation. For instance, we could have essay contests about, you know, what is the value of historic preservation to a village like Downers Grove? So, a lot of that has to do with intergovernmental cooperation with District 58 and District 99, and I wouldn't mind taking the lead on that.
Thank you. Leslie Sadowski-Fugut.
Yes, so, most of my day is spent thinking about this. How do I solicit the ideas of young people and help them to make a change? So, I think a bigger part of it is meeting people where they are, and that's regardless of age, anything. But we need to meet young people where they are. We need to use technology and the methods of communicating that young people are using. And even at this point, I'm too old to know that, so I listen to the young people to see what it is that they want to communicate through. I think that we need to find unique ways of gathering young people. Coffee with the council maybe is not the most approachable way for teens. So, I would like to perhaps even have like a small forum, just to see if there is a format that teens would be more amenable to, and I would like to really have a little bit more open communication with teens and, again, meet them where they are.
Thank you. Jeffrey Jacobsen.
So, interestingly enough, I think there's more younger people involved in politics now than ever was. In Illinois, you can vote in the primary even though you're not 18, as long as you turn 18 by Election Day. We, I don't know if you know about peer jury, but those are high school students that are jurors that decide what's going to happen. We need to reach out to them, though. One of the things I'd like to do is have more town hall meetings. I'd like to go out and meet kids and get them involved. I've got my kids. I have a teenager that's involved in my campaign. He's not exactly ecstatic about that. But he can at least see how things function. There's just, there's a lot more kids, and I think we need to just keep inviting them in and letting them see what's going on, let them see what happens on the council and the village and why it's so important. Why are you here? They need to know that. Thanks.
Thank you. Nicole Wallace.
Thank you. I, every day, try and try and try to engage young people. We reinstated peer jury, which I think was a great step forward. I love the idea of engaging young people on our boards and commissions. I think that would be extremely beneficial, not only for them, but also for us as adults, to interact with people that are a little bit younger than us. They have amazing ideas and creativity that a lot of times goes untapped. So, I think that would be a fantastic opportunity to do so. Again, continuing to be seen in the community, going to football games, I take my kids. I was just at Pizza Wars. I think just getting out there and engaging with that group of students. And also finding a way to engage them on social media. I think that's extremely important. Every day, I'm begging my students to get off of social media. So, I think that would be a wonderful way, if we could come up with a creative idea to engage them in that sense. That would be very beneficial. Thank you.
Thank you. Leslie Sadowski-Fugut. With the development of the downtown area in Ogden Avenue, what is your plan to increase economic development south of downtown?
Yes, also of importance to me because I do live in the southern half of Downers Grove, so I understand the concerns at 75th and Lamont and 63rd and Woodward quite deeply. I do know that the Economic Development Corporation has been working very hard to try and redevelop that property, and I really would be interested in working with that group to see what our next steps are. If we have tried for about 10 years to try to get this developed, do we need to use more extreme measures? I would not be opposed to looking into things like eminent domain or buying that property if it is something that the residents feel is of great value to this community to spend our money on. I obviously want to be fiscally responsible to the constituents, but I am definitely in favor of working very closely with Economic Development Corporation to move on that.
Thank you. Jeffrey Jacobsen.
So, as I mentioned, I'm concerned about all of Downers Grove. And I'll, just quickly, for those of you that don't know, the 75th and Lamont is owned by approximately 15 different owners, who each one has a veto power, and they don't all agree. That's my understanding, which is, one of them, his sole reason in being in business is just to open the Halloween store and the Christmas store. Otherwise, he doesn't really care, which is why it goes down. We've been trying to work with them to develop businesses, and you see where it is now today. Some people have said they don't want to do eminent domain. As an attorney, I'm not fearful of it. I think it's one of the tools, and I wouldn't be surprised because of my comment now, maybe those 15 owners will decide to do something about it. Because when you purchase something as eminent domain, you get it for the value of the property as it is. Right now, the value is worthless, so it would be a good purchase under the eminent domain law. It's one of our tools. We need to start being not so nice with them. Thanks.
Nicole Wallace.
75th and Lamont and 63rd and Woodward are catalyst sites. The EDC continues to work with the property owners and tenants, specifically in the 75th and Lamont location. Three properties went through bankruptcy in that area, one of them being the Toys R Us, for example. Bankruptcy has its own process. It can be extremely lengthy. There are currently 16 owners, which is actually down from 18. So, if you can imagine, trying to coordinate all of these separate restrictions deals, deeds with 16 different people. So, our EDC and Michael Kassa continue to work to, for this area on 75th and Lamont. It took 30 years for it to get where it's at, so it may take a little bit of time. 63rd and Woodward, we're currently in the process, the EDC is currently in the process of trying to find tenants and is helping the landlord with that process. Thank you.
Rich Culavany?
I think one of the things you do is to look at other villages where this has already worked. Just to the west of here, Seven Bridges in Woodbridge is a wonderful example of a large property where they put in a mixed development, and it's vibrant. Another community I visited is Glenview. When they lost the Naval Air Station, they had a real opportunity to develop that property. There's nothing wrong with going to those developers and saying, "Could you do a similar thing in Downers Grove?" And that's not to minimize the fact that the issues at 75th are very complex because of the bankruptcy, because of the multiple owners there. But I think we have to be creative. I have no problem talking to developers. As a matter of fact, when Trammell Crowe was putting in their building at Main and Maple, I actually talked to the developers to ask for their cooperation in helping to move to the King Home to a suitable property in Prince Pond. I'm very comfortable talking with business people. I've worked with, in a business-to-business environment my entire career. Anything that I could do to help Downers Grove in that regard, I'd be happy to do that.
Thanks. Jeff Jacobsen. Do you support enacting a tax on plastic bags?
I don't. I don't think taxing our residents anymore is a benefit. You know, it's, people just aren't going to buy plastic bags. I don't think following in the city of Chicago's footstep with the plastic bag and the soda tax is a way to solve problems. It just creates more problems for our residents and our businesses.
Thank you. Nicole Wallace.
I don't think taxing plastic bags is the answer. I think most people would agree that we are taxed enough. We see complaints all over about how Illinois just taxes, taxes, taxes. So, I don't think that that's the way to go. Now, could we find a way to creatively encourage the use of reusable bags somehow? Maybe. I think that's something that we could potentially look into, but no, I would not support a tax on plastic bags.
Thanks. Rich Culavany?
Yeah, I wouldn't support that either. We do a great job with our curbside recycling in Downers Grove. It's fascinating how long we've done that, what, maybe 25 years? I also think you need to start with education. For those people who are my age, you'll remember, we were pretty much indoctrinated that littering was just an awful thing. And frankly, I couldn't even imagine throwing a gum wrapper or anything out the window of my car. And I notice this happens a lot throughout the Chicago area, so I think we need to get back with the kids and teach them these things. I think we're doing a good job at recycling, and I think we should continue to do that and not add the burden of another tax.
Thank you. Leslie Sadowski-Fugut.
Yes, so, as someone who works with kids, but also at a zoo, I believe much more in positive reinforcement than negative punishment. So, I would not necessarily support a plastic bag tax, but I would very much support incentivizing reusable options. Plastic is, the manufacturing of plastic is certainly, again, contributing to some environmental issues, and so I think that we would have a much more positive response if we're instead incentivizing people for doing good things and building a community that way rather than trying to punish people.
Thank you. Nicole Wallace. Do you favor a new special service area to financially support downtown?
Yes, I do. Our Downtown Management Corporation and our downtown area in general are extremely important. They're the heart of our village. Now, we currently have a committee that's looking at this, and I think we need to, I think the question remains whether benefits specifically, specific to the downtown should be funded by the downtown. be funded by the downtown, but future downtown service levels and budget, starting after the expiration of the SSA, remain undetermined. However, I believe this is something I would support. Our, part of the reason why we all love our community so much is because of what goes on in our downtown, and our Downtown Management Corporation, our Economic Development Corporation, they work extremely hard to make sure that Downers Grove is a fantastic place to be, so I think we need to continue on that path.
Thanks. Rich Colovany.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
Sure.
Do you favor a new special service area to financially support downtown?
Just a brain fog there. Yes, I do, but I think it needs to be a lot more fair. I did attend the sessions in the committee room several months ago, when they talked about the expiration of the SSA. Right now, some of the residents are paying $2,000 a year for SSA, in addition to something like $6,000 a year in homeowner association fees, condo association fees, and I think the best way to do that is look at what services are incremental and what improvements are incremental that Downers Grove is providing them that we are not providing to other residents, and what is of specific value to those people, and I think we need to price it fairly. I don't believe we should punish people for living downtown, but I also don't think we necessarily have to give them free services. For instance, if we're shoveling the sidewalks in front of their building, that's something that's not done in front of our residents, so that would be something that they should be willing to pay for.
Thank you. Leslie Sadowski-Fugit.
Yes, I would support a renewal of the special service area, again, really in collaboration with those businesses and residents. I very much agree that we need to be able to balance the benefits you get from living downtown, like the snow shoveling, with the benefits that we are all getting from downtown. Now, when we say this, keep in mind, this is either going to mean we may have to cut some services, or that may mean that some of those costs are going to be shifted onto the rest of the village. So obviously, that's going to be a conversation that we're not only going to want to have with our downtown businesses and residents, but also with our residents as a whole. So we're going to really need to have a larger community conversation about what it is about downtown that we all benefit from, and that we would all be willing to contribute towards that, but yes, I would be very interested in entertaining that conversation.
Thank you. Jeffrey Jacobson.
So I'd like to see the report when it finally comes out. I can tell you, it's been very successful. It's been so successful, our downtown, that we now have a parking issue, which is a wonderful thing, I guess, if you're going to have problems to have. Currently, I think it's a great thing. It's done very well for Downers Grove, for the businesses in Downers Grove, and for everyone that enjoys the benefits. I don't know if it's because I'm on the Liquor Commission, but I tend to go to more of the restaurants in Downers Grove than other cities. I get to see the menus ahead of time, always looking forward to going to the new businesses in Downers Grove, and especially in the downtown area. So I'd like to just wait and see, but so far, I think the SSA has been incredible.
Thank you. Rich Colovany. How can the village's boards and committees be leveraged more meaningfully to support the village?
I think we have great resources. If we had the opportunity of actually putting other issues in front of them, for instance, with the Plan Commission, we only react to petitions that are brought for us. We don't typically get involved with other discussion points that are important to the village, so I think village staff could actually expand our role by putting some of these discussions. We meet in public forum. It gives the residents the opportunity to do that, and I think we should also ask those boards and commissions if there are things that they would like to consider. For instance, the Architectural Design and Review Board, who handles the historic preservation request, also was asked to study local incentives for historic preservation, and unfortunately, that didn't go anywhere. So I think that was a perfect example of using that board properly.
Thank you. Leslie Sadowski-Fugit.
Yes, I am also in favor of trying to make our boards a little bit more proactive, instead of always being reactive, so perhaps that may mean that the council determines some potential items that they might be interested in for perhaps the following year, and have them look into a very cursory look, not so that they dive too deep into something that we're not going to follow through with. It could also mean that the, those boards and commissions bring something that they have been hearing from residents to the council that perhaps maybe we didn't have a finger on the pulse of. So I definitely think that there are opportunities for us to work a little bit more closely. I am also in favor of having council members kind of be the ones that read through the minutes and keep an eye on what is happening each month that these boards and commissions meet, so that we know we are up to date on everything that's happening in the community.
Thank you. Jeffrey Jacobson.
So, I think the boards and commissions would be a great opportunity for us to get more people involved. I've always thought that getting appointed to a board or commission in the past was very political. You had to know someone. On the organizations that I'm involved in, those are great ways to bring new people into the community, to get people that wanted to be involved but really didn't know anyone, and you get them on a board or commission that fits what they know, their experience, their skill level. To get more involved in a village, I find that when you're more involved in something, it's more enjoyable. Probably one of the reasons that I love Downers Grove is because I am involved in it, but I think it'll be a great opportunity to bring new people into Downers Grove, the future of Downers Grove.
Thank you. Nicole Wallace.
I believe our boards and commissions are extremely important. I know that there are definitely some frustrations out there on certain commissions and boards where people say, we never meet, or they never have a quorum. So I think, you know, maybe as part of streamlining this process, we occasionally check attendance, who's attended, maybe contact that person and say, do you still want to serve on this committee? Because otherwise, we've got a long list of residents that are interested in serving. I appreciate the idea of reading minutes. I think there are more ways that we can be more transparent about what's going on on our boards and commissions, but they definitely play an important role, and we just reenacted the Human Services Committee as an ad hoc. I remember that was a commission that I applied for, and I didn't even know that it didn't exist anymore, so again, there are still ways that we can continue to be more transparent when it comes to boards and commissions and improve in that area.
Thank you. So this is the last question, and Leslie Sadowski-Fugit will start. How do you propose continuing to control costs while maintaining exceptional services?
This is definitely a very challenging balance. I think that we really need to leverage both our governmental, but also our non-governmental organizations in the area. We have some wonderful groups around, for example, if we're talking about environmental concerns and stormwater, we can really point to Sustained Page and SCAERS. We have some great organizations that have expertise, so I think we need to leverage those opportunities, as well as work with the surrounding villages and towns to see if there are any areas in which we can streamline processes. So for example, the dispatch service for our first responders is one example of that. I'm not in favor of reducing staffing levels, but I am in favor of seeing where we can perhaps streamline some processes and eliminate redundancies that way.
Thanks. Jeffrey Jacobson.
So we've been reducing headcount for a while now in order to keep the balance. One of the things that's going to be a challenge for your next council is Amazon and internet sales are going to impact our retail sales and our sales tax in Downers Grove. They're going to have a negative impact. We need to work on getting the businesses in the south part in Downers Grove to start producing sales. We can't afford to cut our firemen or policemen anymore. We need to look at the state and the county to help us, and then we also need to look at sharing stuff. For example, one of the cities we, you know, with the townships, we work in doing some of the plowing. We can use other services, instead of having duplicate services that may be used to cut our expenses to help us out, but it's definitely something that, realize it's a complex, compound answer. Use something to take a look at our expenses in the next few years.
Thank you. Nicole Wallace.
Well, we're going to need to get creative in this area, and we already have. Just recently, we identified and adopted new revenue sources, which generated $1.75 million from the newly created food and beverage tax. While that may not have been a very popular thing, storefronts are closing, and I am not in favor of reducing service levels with our police and fire. So, we're going to need to continue to get creative. We're going to need to continue to partner with other governmental bodies in town. For example, we partnered with our school districts when our new business Rex Norad opened. We currently help them to livestream and televise their board meetings, so we may need to continue to do a little bit more collaborative work with other governmental bodies, and we're going to need to continue to get creative if we want our service levels to remain the same, which I do.
Thank you. Rich Colovany.
Yeah, the biggest challenge the village has is it's operated very leanly. Over the last eight years, the amount of levy for operations has been flat. They've also reduced the full-time equivalent in this next year's budget by a total of 72 over the last few years, so I think we're going to have to be creative in what we look at. One idea is going to zero-based budgeting. Typically, the way you do budgets is you look at, this is what we spent last year, we're going to spend a little bit more, we're going to spend a little bit less. With zero-based budgeting, it actually asks you to justify every single expenditure. The second area would be true intergovernmental cooperation. I had a conversation with Dave Fieldman, our village manager, several months ago, and I said, are we doing a great job at intergovernmental cooperation? He said, well, with some of the things, it doesn't even move the needle. But you know, we're reducing three headcount this next year, and moving the needle a bit could have saved some of those positions. I think we should look for areas in sharing IT services, maintenance, plowing, and the reality of our new economy with Amazon and such.
Thank you. So we'll move to your closing statements, and we'll go in reverse order, so Jeffrey Jacobson, you are first.
So, once again, I want to thank the League of Women Voters and everyone for staying out so late and listening to us. I don't believe there's any way that you can possibly understand the candidates from such a short period of time, so I ask you to go look at my website if you want to talk to me. I'll be around afterwards, and until April 2nd, available to meet with anyone, to answer any of your questions. You can look at my record on the Liquor Commission, volunteering for organizations, my passion and my love for Downers Grove. A city is something very important. It's where my kids were raised, where I live, where I probably will die, my kids will probably find their jobs here. A city is, and a village is very important to a human being, and it's something I care a great deal about, so hopefully on April 2nd, you'll vote for me, Jeffrey Jacobson, and I want to thank you again, the League of Women Voters.
Thank you. Leslie Sadowski-Fugit.
I quite frankly, never thought I would be here. I thought that I would be a nonprofit employee. I would volunteer with PTAs and coaching my daughter's sports teams as she grew up, but as I watched people around me struggle due to stormwater impacts and other similar concerns, as I saw people who came through during the library board concerns, feeling like perhaps their voices weren't being heard, I decided that I needed to step up and be a little bit better of a role model for my daughter and her generation. I grew up with a history teacher as a mother, and civics was ingrained in me, and so if I want to make a change, and if I want to ensure the sustainability of Downers Grove for my daughter, then I need to step up and take action. So I hope that this is just the start of a conversation with everyone here, and I hope to earn your vote on April 2nd.
Thank you. Rich Colovany.
Yeah, first of all, I want to thank you for coming. As I mentioned before, I attend a lot of the village council meetings, and unfortunately, people are busy. There are often maybe two, three, four people sitting in the audience, certainly Nicole can attest to that. I believe if you're passionate about where you live, then you should get involved, and if you get involved and you take a balanced approach, you make fact-based decisions, then you can do a lot to serve your community. The other thing that, other reason I'm running is that there's a lot of factionalism within our village government, and I think that's not only directed towards the individual, but it's also directed towards their supporters, and I'd like to just do away with that. I think we should be respectful. Good ideas are good ideas regardless of, from where they come. I think it's incumbent upon us just to be able to be reasonable and to serve you people well, and that's why I'm running.
Thank you. Nicole Wallace.
I would like to thank everyone for their time, and again, thank you to the League of Women Voters, Ms. Dorner, and those in the audience. Downers Grove needs to continue to remain a vibrant and welcoming community. I would like to continue working collaboratively on a fiscally responsible solution to our police station and village facilities, and I also want to continue to monitor our stronger stormwater regulations that we enacted in October, and continue to encourage development in our town while continuing to keep that community character. No matter what your beliefs, we can continue to work to make Downers Grove a better place to live. My name is Nicole Wallace, candidate for Downers Grove Village Council. Feel free to contact me, nicolewallace@4dg@gmail.com, and I hope I can earn your vote on April 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you. Your participation as a candidate and as voters is essential to preserving our freedom and our country. Please remember to vote on or before April 2nd, as one vote can decide the election, and that one vote could be yours. Please join me in showing your appreciation for these candidates.[1725.13][1725.13](APPLAUSE)
The local League of Women Voters would like to thank everyone for staying so late this evening and for all candidates for coming. As Jan said, it is incredibly important to be engaged in politics, but I believe that local politics are where it is the most important, and we are the most impactful.